All right, welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee hearing this Tuesday the 25th at 10:00 a.m. here in room 525, I think. Yes, 225, sorry, 225. There is no 525. I don't think it'd be part of the governor's office or something. We have one item for consideration today. It's Governor's Message 675 for Kimberly Sumoto Gidri to for submitting for consideration and confirmation of the Intermediate Court of Appeals as Associate Judge for a term to expire in 10 years. First up today on the testifier list is Rhonda Griswold, HSPA President. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes.
Hang on, before you go on further, we just barely hear you. IT, is it possible to turn up the volume a little?
Good morning, is that better?
No. Mr. Holder, are you still there?
I'll get, I'll look into it real fast.
I guess go ahead and just shout as loud as you can.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes and members of the Judiciary Committee. I'm Rhonda Griswold, President of the Hawaii State Bar Association. We've submitted written testimony explaining all the reasons why we found nominee Kimberly Gidry to be qualified to serve as an Associate Justice on the Intermediate Court of Approval, excuse me, Intermediate Court of Appeals. I welcome any questions you may have about our process, but the bottom line is we found her to be qualified. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, Ms. Griswold, I think has to leave. So if you have any questions for her, if you'd like to ask them, please ask them now.
Sure.
Senator Sanbuenaventura, go ahead.
Okay, so Ms. Griswold, were there any opposition to Ms. Gidry's nomination? From the State Bar? Any attorneys came out in opposition?
No, the comments were positive.
Okay, and how many, how many comments or how many people provided an opinion one way or the other? Well, obviously all in support. How many of them provided?
I don't have the materials in front of me, but I think it was roughly around 10 in addition to her references.
Okay, thank you very much.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thanks very much, Ms. Griswold.
Thank you for putting me at the front of the calendar. I appreciate it.
Mr. Holder, we still can't hear very well, so if you can try to figure out how to make it louder, that would be great. We have, we have Governor Green in support. Next, we have Gary Suganuma for Department of Taxation in support. Next, we have Gerard Lau, also possibly on Zoom. Is or is not?
He is.
He is, okay. Mr. Lau, you there?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Dear Chairman Rhodes, Vice Chairman Gabbard, and members, I am Gerard Lau, Solicitor General of Hawaii from 2011 to 2016. I'm here to offer my strongest recommendation that Hawaii Solicitor General Kimberly Sumoto Gidry be confirmed for her position of Associate Judge of the ICA. Rather than reading my submitted written testimony verbatim, I'll just briefly summarize. I know Kimberly extremely well, perhaps more than anyone in terms of her professional ability, legal skills, and integrity, because I worked closely with her as a colleague or as her supervisor for 14 years in the AG's appellate division. So I'm fully aware of her amazing legal abilities and her outstanding character. Kimberly has the highest ethical standards and integrity. In working closely with her on a daily basis for 14 years, I have never known her to do anything improper, selfish, discriminatory, or unethical. Instead, she has conducted herself with the utmost integrity and with compassion for the less fortunate and others who may face prejudice. She is also a kind and thoughtful person who genuinely cares about others. Second, Kimberly is always calm and composed when dealing with colleagues and opposing counsel. I'm certain therefore that Kimberly would conduct herself on the bench in a very respectful manner, both to, both to the advocates who come before her and to her colleagues and staff. Third, Kimberly's ability to analyze legal arguments and assess and critique weak or specious theories is excellent. She can skillfully scrutinize compelling, competing legal contentions and reach a well-reasoned conclusion supported by compelling analysis and case precedent. And Kimberly is an excellent writer who expresses herself in writing very clearly, which will make her judicial opinions not only transparent to the legal community, but most importantly understandable, understandable by the general public as well. I know this as I reviewed virtually all of her written work, including legal briefs, when I was her supervisor. Kimberly has the most extensive knowledge of the necessary.
Sorry to cut you off, Mr. Lau. Would you have a two-minute time limit and to the end of it? Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Next is David Day. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holder, by the way, that is better, whatever you did. It could be just a tiny bit louder if you can, if you can crank it up some more. David Day. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee, thanks. I'm Dave Day. I'm the Special Assistant to the Attorney General here in my personal capacity. I was, before I was the Special Assistant, I served as a Deputy Solicitor General and Ms. Gidry was my boss. I just want to speak a little bit about the appellate division and who she led and how she led. The appellate division in the department is an elite strike force as far as a legal team. It is a group of tremendously capable individuals who are tasked with numerous tasks, but among them, the most important is appellate work and working with Supreme Court briefs, Ninth Circuit briefs, and before the Intermediate Court of Appeals. The leadership that Ms. Gidry showed was incredible in terms of harnessing of really, you know, this, this team to work on these tremendously difficult issues that face the state, defending the state and, and doing it in such a capable manner. And I just wanted to echo one other thing is that if there was one word to describe Ms. Gidry is that she's kind. She's a tremendously kind individual and she has a tremendous moral character. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ashiro, were you here to testify on Governor's behalf?
Yes.
We've already passed him, so if you want to come on up, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for being late. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Like I said, Senior Advisor for the Governor, you have our written testimony. I just hear in strong support. Governor apologizes he isn't able to be here. He had another meeting that took him away, but he did ask me to come down just to express our really strong support for Kim Gidry. He took the time to talk with each of the nominees, and while all of them were excellent candidates, he found Kim to just really be exceptional with her intellectual skill and her commitment to justice. And so I'll be available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Kalika Onalani D. Fernandez. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, my name is Kalika Onalani D. Fernandez. I'm testifying today in my personal capacity in strong support of Kimberly Sumoto Gidry. As a Deputy Solicitor General for the state, I've worked closely with Kimberly on a nearly daily basis for approximately six years. I can personally attest to her skill as an attorney, the quality of her legal writing, and her extensive experience as an appellate practitioner. There are few that can match her level of experience with the state appellate system, which would serve her well as an ICA judge. She has also devoted the entirety of her career to public service, and the bench, in my view, is the next step in her commitment to public service. Just a few additional points. First, a judge's role is important not just as a jurist to decide cases, but also as a supervisor to law clerks. Judges can provide attorneys, young attorneys, with unmatched opportunities for training and mentorship. And as a former law clerk to two wonderful judges, I understand the significance of these opportunities and the importance of having judges that will create a positive environment for law clerks. I have every confidence that Kimberly will be that kind of judge for future law clerks. She has run the Solicitor General's Office with a truly collaborative spirit, and she is keenly aware of when to provide support and when to trust in someone's abilities, all of which has allowed her deputies, including myself, to grow as attorneys and people. And lastly, over the past nearly six years, I've had the opportunity to get to know Kimberly not only as an attorney and as a colleague, but as a person. I think anyone who has spent any amount of time with her will know that she is incredibly kind. She treats others with respect and empathy. She balances her important job for the state with her equally important job as a mother to her two children, giving them unconditional love and support. She is a person of integrity and professionalism. She has the character and temperament to be an outstanding judge, and I wholeheartedly support her confirmation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Devange. Good morning.
Morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. My name is Matt Devange, and I currently serve as First Deputy Attorney General of the State of Hawaii, although I'm testifying today in my personal capacity. I have my written testimony, so I'll be very brief. Kim Gidry is an outstanding nominee for this position. Her experience, intelligence, and humility are what led her to this point in her career. And I can think of no one better to uphold the commitment that all judges make to support and defend the constitutions of Hawaii and the United States of America. Kim has faithfully, faithfully served the Department of the Attorney General for over 20 years, and I am certain that she will bring the same dedication to the judiciary for many more years to come. While her elevation to the bench will be a tremendous loss to the department, it will be a huge gain to the state and people of Hawaii. I ask this committee to look favorably upon her nomination, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much. Next is Mian Yamashiro in support. Carter Siu in support. Kristi Davis in support. Doris Devange in support. If any of you happen to be here, just jump up, or if you're on Zoom, let us know. Robert Nakatsugi in support. Gerard Silva in opposition. Jeffrey Komea in support. Judge Daniel Foley in support. Gary Yamashiroya in support. Thomas Watson in support. Daniel Harris McCoy in support. Candace Park in support. Lauren Chun in support. William Winhoff in support. Stella Cam in support. Mason Chi in support. Deidre Marie Iha in support. Valerie Cato in support. Dana Viola, Viola in support. Abby Day in support. Janine Udui in support. Christopher Leong in support. Donna Colama in support. Pat O'Hara in support. Joanna Yeh in support. Reese Nakamura in support. James Walter in support. Kelsen Paiva in support. Ewan Rayner in support. Robin Chun in support. Nicholas McLean in support. Judge Mark Bennett in support. Jennifer Tran in support. Miho Kojito for Hawaii Women's, Hawaii Women Lawyers in support. And Holly Shikata in support. That's everybody who signed up on GM 675. Does anyone, anyone else wish to testify? Sure. Attorney General. Good morning.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I apologize for not getting my written testimonies submitted. I am here in my personal capacity, and I want to, I strongly support Kim and want to note that the list of people that you just identified in support are people that have worked with Kim for in excess of 10 years at the Attorney General's Office. And I think the very fact that all of those people support her demonstrates that they have consistently worked with her and believe that she's the, the right person for this job. She will bring, I believe, the absolute highest integrity and ethical standards to the bench. She is meticulous in her analysis. She is calm, and she doesn't make decisions rash, rashly. She waits until she really understands the facts, analyzes the law, and asks the questions that she needs to. I strongly support her, and I hope that you'll confirm.
Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, not next up. Anyone else wishing to testify in GM 675, GM 675? Okay, members, any questions for any of the testifiers so far within the HSPA? Okay. Ms. Gidry, come on up and if you'd like to make an opening statement, you're more than welcome.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the Senate Judiciary Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you today. I am deeply honored to have been nominated by Governor Green for ICA Judicial Office and appreciate the Senate's consideration of my nomination. Here with me today are my husband Michael and my son Dell. I applied for this new Seventh ICA Judicial Office and Sixth ICA Associate Judge Position, an office that was newly created by the legislature last session for two primary reasons. I know and love appellate law, and I am deeply committed to public service. I know that if confirmed, I will be able to use the experience and unique appellate-based skillset that I've acquired over 20 years of appellate practice to serve the ICA faithfully, honorably, and decisively. By way of background, I was born and raised in Hawaii. I graduated with honors from Kalani High School and UH Manoa. I then attended and graduated from the William S. Richardson School of Law, where I had the privilege of serving on the editorial board of the Asian Pacific Law and Policy Journal. After passing the bar exam, I began my two-decade career as a Deputy Attorney General. I've been an appellate deputy all of that time for the last three years, serving as the state's Solicitor General. As Solicitor General, I am the state's Chief Appellate Attorney and the supervisor of the appellate division with oversight responsibility for the department's appellate cases. Over the years, I've had the opportunity to work on both civil and criminal cases and cases in both state and federal appellate courts. My primary practice has been state court appellate law in the ICA. I've handled cases on a wide array of substantive legal issues, family law, criminal, tort, tax, land use, among other things. This has prepared me for the ICA's very diverse case docket. I respect and appreciate the intent of the legislature in creating the judicial office that I've been nominated to and hope to be confirmed for. It's why I'm here and why I applied for this judicial office. This position will be pivotal to helping the court, the ICA, to address its historical backlog of cases as well as the many new appeals that are docketed each year. As an appellate practitioner, I understand the need for timely resolution of cases. Each case is important to the parties involved, and each case must be decided both efficiently and correctly. I am firmly committed to helping the ICA to achieve these goals. I appreciate your consideration of my nomination. I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions?
Yeah. For the cases that you represent the state of Hawaii on, how many of those did you represent the legislature?
I, I actually don't have a specific number. I, I think that there were, there were at least several cases, but I'm not, in some of these places, cases, just to clarify, I didn't directly represent the, the legislature. So for example, in League of Women Voters, I was, I represented the state of Hawaii, and Colleen Hanabusa represented the, the legislature.
Okay, so you supervised Colleen Hanabusa?
No, no, we were co-counsel on that case, representing, technically representing different parties, but we were co-counsel on the same side on that case.
And yeah, because I know you did appellate work, so somebody else must have done the trial work before. Were you also involved in the Native Hawaiian case, the Native Hawaiian Legal, not Legal Court, DHHL regarding the amounts of money that the legislator had put in the budget? Were you involved in that one? I don't remember the case.
I think that you're, you might be referring to the Nelson case.
Yes, the Nelson case.
And I was involved, I did represent the state on appeal in that case. And there are other cases where, that case actually was one of those cases where there were several cases that have been pending for, for years. And I began representing the state, not at the outset of the case, but at some point during the litigation.
That one, you also had co-counsel too, right? Like Colleen Hanabusa for League of Women Voters. Wasn't Mark Bennett your co-counsel in that one?
I, I believe that Mark Bennett was involved with that case at an earlier stage of the litigation, but I, I was not, when I became involved with this case, it, it went back and forth, up and down on appeal several times. And when I represented the state on appeal, I, I don't, I did not have co-counsel on the case, and, and Mark Bennett was involved at a prior stage of the litigation, if I recall correctly.
So I, I remember, because we were in the legislature at the time, that I believe the legislature hired Mark Bennett. But, and I remember, were you part of any kind of settlement discussions in that case?
No, that, that part of the litigation was, would have occurred before I became involved with the case.
So who does the settlement during appeal? It's not you? I mean, I thought you were the supervising appellate attorney.
Right, so when I became involved as a lead attorney of the Nelson case, I was, it was actually within the last few years. So, for example, I think, you know, my predecessor, Gerard Lau, who had testified earlier, was an attorney involved with that case at that time.
Okay, and, and maybe, what kind of criteria would a co-counsel, an independent co-counsel be hired to represent the interest, I think, of the legislature at the time? As opposed to just you or somebody from the Attorney General's Office?
So, you know, I apologize that I, I, I don't think I could really speak to your question because I've never actually been involved with decisions with respect to, you know, the legislature's retention of a co-counsel. So for example, in the Nelson case, I, I wasn't, you know, involved with that decision-making. And in League of Women Voters as well, when the legislature had retained Colleen Hanabusa, I was not involved with that aspect. So I don't think that I could speak to.
Were you involved with the OHA settlement previously?
No, not, not that I can recall. I mean, I, I recall working on several OHA cases.
This is the one that, that ended up with the.
Go to another question.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Gidry. Congratulations on your appointment, and thank you for being here today. Just a few questions that I have is, being that you're coming from the Attorney General's Office, and you've oversaw this division that now if you were to be confirmed as an ICA judge, how would you proceed if there were conflicts of interest if you were a judge on the ICA bench?
So I would immediately recuse myself from any case in which I, there, there wasn't a conflict. So for example, you know, cases where I have represented the state or its agencies or officials, I would certainly recuse myself from those cases. I think that, you know, there are other cases where there may not be maybe as direct or explicit a conflict, but perhaps, you know, if there is even the appearance of a potential conflict, I assure you that I would also take those situations very seriously, you know, perhaps reaching out to the Commission on, the Hawaii Commission on Judicial Conduct for advice, as well as another thing that I've seen judges in, in my own cases do is to notify the parties of the situation and ask for their response as to my continued involvement in, in the case, which is all to say that I do want to assure this committee that I take my ethical responsibility, responsibility very seriously.
Thank you for that. And my last question that I have is, so it's my understanding that this position is a new position, an additional position created on the ICA bench. Is, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Having said that, obviously, you've worked with this particular judicial court in that sense, and you've seen the amounts of caseload. So what are your thoughts on, obviously, having a new judge there would help improve the efficiency of it, but do you have any thoughts or strategy, you know, in terms of the amount of caseload that the ICA takes up and how to perhaps maybe improve that?
So I, you know, my understanding is that, you know, there are hundreds of new appeals that are docketed with ICA each year, and that currently with the, the existing number of judges about roughly, my understanding is that roughly an equal number of cases are able to be decided each year. And that is why, you know, I do think that this new judicial office is so important because it is an additional judicial office that would help the court, I think, meaningfully cut into, you know, its existing historical caseload. And I, I do think, you know, as an appellate practitioner for many years who has practiced before the ICA, I have cases that are also, you know, have been pending with the ICA for years, and I do understand. I have a deep respect for the court. I understand its backlog. I, I want to, to, to help the court to address that, but also, as I mentioned, you know, to, I, I respect the role of a judge, an appellate court judge, to very faithfully apply the law and interpret the law. And I think that all cases, as I've mentioned, have to be decided correctly and well, and there's really a need to balance judicial efficiency with also with, you know, making sure that each case is decided correctly, and I, I am firmly committed to that.
Thank you, Ms. Gidry. Thank you, Chair Rhodes.
Thank you. Members, other questions? Senator Sanbuenaventura, you have further questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to follow up on that, and I started practice a long time ago, where, where, before the legislature changed it, the first appellate court would have been the Supreme Court, and then the ICA, and then it changed to the ICA as being the primary court of appeal, and that's the reason why folks have so many cases before it goes up to the Supreme Court. So the reason I, I want to ask you about those cases was because from the legislative point of view, at the time, and it was, we had concerns as to whether or not the legislature was being represented correctly, and that's the reason why we brought in independent counsel. And so I like it that Mark Bennett is one of your supporters because I remember attorney-client type of discussions as to what he saw, what was going on. So, but I was wondering also about the, the, you know, the other cases that, that, that involve the legislator where there were independent counsel. I mean, when you were looking at it as a supervising attorney, did you see any kind of appellate, I mean, mistakes that, that you may have corrected from then on? Or why do you think we felt that we needed to be represented by independent counsel?
So, Senator Sanbuenaventura, I, I think with respect, the only case that I can recall that I have handled where there has been specific separate representation for the Hawaii legislature, the, the only case that I can recall personally working on is, is League of Women Voters, and in that case, the I began handling that case when it went up on appeal. So it was actually handled by a different attorney within my office at the, the trial court stage. And the, the the representation, the retention of special counsel or counsel specifically for the legislature, that was made prior to my becoming directly involved with this case. So I apologize that I, I really could not speak to why a decision was made, you know, by the legislature or just as a general matter, you know, why there was separate.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So I'm gonna switch gears if you could. One more question. And that would be, I know when you're answering with Senator Elamont, that you're gonna end up having to recuse yourself probably from state of Hawaii cases. And how many, have you talked with ODC? Or how long you need to recuse yourself?
So I, I have. So I have not, I have not looked at specifically those types of details and I think, you know, certainly that is something that if confirmed, I would, you know, do immediately in terms of seeing which cases and for how long, you know, I would need to, the specifics of when I would need to recuse myself. I mean, there are clear-cut cases where I would need to recuse myself, any case where I represented the state.
And how many of those are pending?
So I, you know, I apologize I couldn't give you a specific number, but I do know that there are very many cases before the ICA where the state is not a party. And for example, as one example, my understanding is that roughly a third of the ICA's current docket consists of criminal cases. Most of the criminal appeals are handled by the county prosecutors offices. I would not be, need to recuse myself from those cases. There are also many other cases, as I understand, that involve private litigants. There are family law cases where DHS is not a party. And so, you know, there are very many cases, as I understand, where I would be able to, I would be able to serve as a judge. As I understand, there are also, you know, many, many motions procedural and substantive that are filed with the ICA each year, over a thousand. And, you know, the motions judges have a big responsibility and I would be able to also help the court in that capacity. So, I think that, you know, certainly, certainly I would have a caseload.
No, no, I understand that. And frankly, when interviewing you before, one of my pet peeves and the reason why we opened up is, is the huge delay between a case being appealed and the time for an opinion. And I liked your answers, which is basically it can be done by memo instead of a written opinion. But a lot of the cases that come in front that involve the legislator requires a written opinion, right? Because it affects how we, how we deliver and how we create laws. My concern is, whenever a judge has to recuse themselves, it usually delays a lot of pending cases. And that's, and that's just my concern. And I've seen it in private practice, so that's the only comment I made.
Thank you, Senator. So I do, my understanding, and, you know, I could not speak to all the operational details of the court, but my understanding is that cases, when they are docketed, appeals docketed with the ICA, they are automatically assigned and the ICA sits, as you're aware, in panels of three. The cases are, the case assignments are made. And, you know, I do assure you that if I identified a conflict, I would immediately recuse myself. So as not to, you know, so as to do so as efficiently as possible and not, you know, to create any sort of additional delay.
Okay, members, other questions? Okay, I have a few. So in previous ICA, intermediate court appeals judges that have come before this panel, it's been held against them, but they don't have very much trial experience. And I would say that probably compared to the last couple of ICA nominees we had, you probably have less trial experience than they did. What do you say to senators who view having trial court experience for this position as important?
So I do want to make the clarification that I do consider myself to have had trial court experience. And I have, particularly in the last three years as a Solicitor General, I have worked with, my team and I have worked with, you know, trial deputies within the department. You know, we have, we have important cases that raise, you know, significant, complex legal issues that are pending at the trial court level. So we have worked with them to help them to develop the record on appeal, to help them to frame the arguments and issues that are made at the trial court stage. So I have worked on cases at the trial court level.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
From the lens.
I understand that you, it's not that you don't, you have some trial court experience, but I think in your JSC forms, you said it was five to 10% of your total workload.
So I probably have worked on even more cases in terms of, in that capacity as, you know.
But the real question is, it's compared to our previous candidates, some of whom took a lot of flak for not having very much trial court experience. So in my, okay, it's just my opinion, in my estimation, you have less than they did.
Sure.
So what do you, what do you tell senators who say, who want to argue that a lot of trial court experience is important for an ICA judge?
So I would say that really what I think is relevant experience for an ICA judge specifically is appellate court experience, which I have. You know, because an appellate, an ICA judge is an appellate court judge. So is, you know, works with a record. Record, the record on appeal is primarily, you know, analyzing the legal issues, looking at issues of law, looking at issues of law as applied to the facts confined in the record. And that is exactly what I do. That is exactly what I have done for the skill set that I've developed over the past twenty years. So I think that, you know, my own practice experience as an appellate specialist for twenty years is directly relevant to the work, to the skills that I would be, that I would need to very competently do my job if confirmed to be an ICA judge.
Okay, members, other questions? I'll keep asking. So sort of on a related vein, if appellate practice, my observation is a very, well, I mean, the ICA almost never even has, they never even have oral arguments, almost never, not never. And that's something else I want to ask you about. But it's largely done on the papers. And it does kind of lend itself, I think, to sort of this disconnectedness to real life. You're never actually seeing the raw emotion or rarely seeing the raw emotion in court where people get mad at each other and, you know, there's a lot of give and take and arguments between attorneys and dramatic testimony. It's all sort of sterile, you know, you're just looking at this piece of paper and when you want to stop looking at it, you can set it down and go get a cup of coffee and it's just almost an academic kind of atmosphere. What do you, what, how would you, how would you, how would you say that you've, in that, you've done so much of that, which I don't, don't get me wrong, I think that is, you know, it's good that you know what you're doing going into the court. But it's, it's, it does seem like it does lend itself to sort of this disconnectedness from the reality of trials and juries and all that, and all the sort of hubbub that you get at trial court.
So I think the way that I would answer that is, you know, I think that, that certain level of removal is necessary for, you know, an appellate court judge because they are considering, you know, legal issues and they are looking at the record. And they are looking at what happened below through the record on appeal. But I think also it is important always for judges to remember, as I've mentioned before, and I feel this very deeply, that every case involves actual people, actual people who are affected by the decision. You know, the case is incredibly important to the litigants and the people who are involved with the case. And I think that, you know, it is important for appellate court judges, for all judges, to be very mindful of that.
Back to the thing that I said I wanted to mention before, which is the fact that the ICA almost never does oral arguments. I have always sort of suspected that was because they just didn't have time and they had such a huge backlog. What's your view? Do you think it's, is it better to have cases decided simply on the, on the, I'm reluctant to use the word pleadings because I can't remember whether that has some technical term that doesn't apply on the papers, or is it better to have oral argument?
So, so I understand your question and I think that it is very much case-specific. I think that there are cases, particularly those perhaps, and the ICA does address these cases that, you know, raise, that could raise a novel or significant legal issue. And I think these types of cases, you know, oral argument could be very helpful for the court. In my experience, you know, whenever I've done oral argument, it really was an opportunity to, to make sure that the court understood the arguments that we were making and, you know, it's an opportunity to clarify some points in the argument. But I do think also that the ICA also has many cases where that involve, you know, application of existing precedent. The ICA is bound by the Hawaii Supreme Court's precedent. I very much respect stare decisis and, you know, and I think that in cases that, you know, maybe don't raise those types of novel legal issues for the sake of judicial efficiency, you know, I'm not sure that in those cases oral argument is specifically necessary. And those are the types of cases that, you know, could be perhaps decided by a summary disposition order, memorandum, opinion.
So if you, if, say, I don't know, in some world that doesn't exist, that there were ten or fifteen ICA judges and everybody had plenty of time, you think there would be more oral arguments under those circumstances?
You know, I'm not really sure because as I said, I think that it really depends on the specific record and the legal issues, you know, that are raised in a particular case. And I'm not sure that even with all the judicial resources in the world, it would actually, you know, necessarily help the court to have oral argument in every, in every single case. I do really think that it is, it is case-specific and I do respect that. You know, that is something that I am sure the court gives very careful consideration to as to when oral argument would be helpful in that particular case.
Okay. Members, other questions? Okay, I do have one other line of question that I want to talk to you about. So as you're aware, the Hawaii Constitution has a different set of rights and some cases broader sets of rights than the federal constitution. And we do have an explicit right to privacy that the federal, the federal constitution does not have. Is it your opinion that the Hawaii constitutional right to privacy includes the right to an abortion?
So, I am, I am mindful that it is, you know, I, I don't think that it would be appropriate for me to specifically necessarily take positions on legal issues, but with respect to, you know, whether abortion is covered by a constitutional provision of privacy.
It's just a...
That is a position that my office, the Department of the Attorney General, has taken. So yes, I believe that it is covered by the Constitution, the Hawaii Constitution.
Okay, and what do you base that on? Is that on the plain, the plain language of the Constitution or is that on precedent?
So, so various factors and we've done the legal analysis on this issue. And, you know, on the plain language certainly, but also I, there is constitutional history that would support that. And so that is again, you know, a position that my office has taken that I believe to be true and that, you know, an issue that we have looked at.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm done. Anyone else got anything? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. We're gonna, we'll do the decision-making on Thursday, which will be the twenty-seventh at ten o'clock in this room here, two twenty-five.
Thank you.
Till then, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Or, I don't know, technically we're recessed, I guess, recessed.